I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does the record show that all board members are present? And we'll move on to the board showcase, which is the Positive Coaching Alliance. And Darren is at you. And we're there at the table, whatever you want to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I am pleased to present Coach Brian Swan, who will be our presenter tonight and our coach. And I'm thrilled that the board, thank you for supporting another three-year commitment with four sessions each year for Positive Coaching Alliance. Now, I'm not going to kill Brian's thunder here, but Brian is a former leader instructor for Doyle Baseball Softball Academy, which started in Winter Haven, Florida, and is currently in Atworth, Georgia. With Doyle, Coach Swan traveled the country teaching baseball, softball to players ages five to 18, as well as certifying coaches on teaching the fundamental skills of the game. Coach Swan currently trains coaches for local youth baseball organizations in the Minneapolis-St. Paul area and is a youth field instructor for the Minnesota Twins, leading baseball and softball clinics in the five-state area. Brian has 25 years of experience in talent management and leadership development, most recently with Lifetime. He has been a workshop facilitator with PCA for the last 10 years, delivering workshops for coaches, parents, and players, and most recently has become a friend of Darren Lapp's. So, please give more on Brian.
I think that last part was the highlight. Friend of Darren Lapp's, that's important. So, I think the most important thing for you really to know about me is I've, a long time ago, been a high school athlete. I've been a high school coach, and I've been a parent of high school athletes. So, I think that's probably where most of my credibility, if there is any, will come from. I would ask you to do this before we get started today, is go ahead and pull out your phones, and it's probably the only time you'll get to pull out your phones during this time. But you're going to text to sign in. So, if you would kindly text to the number that you see on the screen. And what you're going to text is hashtag, or if you're over 30, that's the pound sign, First name, last name, and your email address. Positive Coaching Alliance will not use that information in any way. They won't solicit you in any way, but you should receive a confirmation that you're here in attendance at our workshop tonight. And it will give you an opportunity to follow up on some great resources that the Positive Coaching Alliance has for you, for coaches, for parents, for players, for leaders in the community as well. So, where's Charlie? Charlie, you were first to text to sign in. There's no award for that, but you do have bragging rights at any of your future meetings. So, just take a few minutes to finish up here, and then I want to make sure that I honor your time, and we'll walk through our content today. So, as a former coach, I think the most frustrating thing for me was the player that just went through the motions. Any of us who have coached or are teachers have probably had those students as well. They typically tend to be the most gifted. They're the most talented, they're the smartest kid in the class, but maybe for some reason, they just want to get to game day and maybe not put in the time, the effort, the commitment, or, right, be the best teammate that they can. That was my biggest frustration as a coach. Here's the challenge for all of us tonight. I want to make sure that you're not that player. Don't go through the motions with me tonight, but take time to say, "I'm going to walk out of here with something that's going to help me better support the Princeton community when it comes to athletes and those who participate in activities that's going to make a significant difference in, right, the experience that they are able to go through." So, that's our focus for tonight. So, this is about leading your activity departments, right? Athletics and any other activities that you offer for your students. And so, I'm going to start with a quick video. I'd like you just to sit and listen and watch, and then be ready to share back any of your thoughts or any of your takeaways from what you see and what you hear. So, anything jump out at you from those messages? Anything resonate with you? Because all of those people that were in this video vignette are part of the Positive Coaching Advisory Board. Great coaches, but more importantly, they've done their homework around some of those that are educators and understand, right? Carol DeWick, as an example, is the author of Mindset. And if you've read that book, Mindset, it's really about how do we help children grow and develop a growth mindset? But back to my original question, anything resonate with you?
Power of positivity.
Power of positivity, yes, absolutely, right? And if we think about a day in our lives, how much of what we're exposed to is positive? And how much of it is draining our tanks in some way, shape, or form? And that's probably, right, twofold, tenfold when it comes to the lives of our children. Okay, what else resonated with you?
That every team member is valuable.
Yes, yeah.
Regardless of skill, regardless of ranking.
Yeah, I was the youngest of 10 kids, seven boys and three girls in my family, but we were pretty well entrenched in athletics. But I remember my mom telling me once, and at a very young age, "Sports doesn't define you. It's just a part of who you are and a part of what you like to be," right? And so, regardless of whether you're playing or not, right, that doesn't add or distract, attract value from you, right? So, every player is important. Every action is important. What else? Any other thing resonate with you? Yes? You can, absolutely.
That, like, the coach should come in with a positive attitude, with a smile on their face.
Yeah.
Their atmosphere really affects the whole atmosphere of the practice.
Sure, yeah, the energy, right, that we bring to the table, right? I only have one opportunity to make a first impression, and what impression am I going to make? But I'm making that every single day. So, when you said, "Can you speak?" Absolutely, because your voice matters, right? What you have to say is probably, "No offense," more important. And whenever you say "no offense," you're going to offend somebody. But you're probably, your voice is more important than most of us in the room. Because at the end of the day, we should all be here with you in mind and your fellow students. So, what we're going to try to accomplish through our objectives here is to align this community around a shared vision for your program. We're going to make sure that we understand our roles, because all stakeholders have to be aligned as leaders, as coaches, as parents, and as students. When we get them all on the same page, we have a chance. And then, we want to make sure that we have a plan. What's the plan? And how are we going to make sure that we can stay the course so that it sustains? That it's not a one-and-done, but that it's something that lasts. And it becomes culture, because culture is essentially how we do things, right? So, I want to just give you a little bit about PCA. PCA has been around since 1998, founded at Stanford University. Everything that you hear is research-based. So, sometimes people get taken aback a little bit on this whole positive coaching, right? And they don't understand that the research is done. It doesn't mean that we're not going to play to win. It doesn't mean that we're not going to be competitive. It doesn't mean that sometimes, right, we have to hold others accountable. It absolutely does, but how we do it is extremely important. And as you saw in that video clip, there's a world-class national advisory board who really helped guide the direction for the Positive Coaching Alliance. So, what we're talking about is creating a development zone. And that's making sure that all stakeholders, those of us that are in this room right now, we're the single-goal leaders. We're the shaper, shaping of the culture, and we're standing up and we're saying, "This is what we stand for." So, let's make sure we align everything around it. We're going to be able to take some time with your coaches to make sure they become double-goal coaches. And each one of these, I'll talk a little bit more in detail as we go through today. We want to make sure our parents are second-goal parents. I was telling Darren as we met or talked by phone, being the youngest of 10, my dad went to every game that I ever played in grade school and high school and college. And he yelled at every umpire, every official, and every referee of every game I ever played. I can vividly remember in eighth grade, him being threatened to be thrown out of a gym, and we were winning 52 to 40, right? And I didn't know it when I was eight, I didn't know it when I was 12, I didn't know it when I was 15, I didn't know it when I was 18. He did it because he loved me. There was absolutely no malice intent behind what he was doing. But no one was sitting in the stands pointing at my dad saying, "I wish I loved my son as much as that guy loves his son," right? They said, "He's cuckoo for Cocoa Puffs." So, his intent was pure, his behavior wasn't aligning with the intent. And that's where we need to make sure we're judged by our behaviors, not by our intent. And then, we want to make sure that we focus on our players and our performers, and that's a triple-impact competitor. So, I'll talk about each of those as we go through today. So, culture is the way we do things. It's, right, who we hire, how we train them, what we recognize and reward, and what we won't tolerate, if you were looking at a business, a business that wants to be successful. In this case, and Darren, this is where I said I pulled this off of the website as I was doing a little research, is I don't necessarily know that this is officially your mission statement, but I thought it got to the point of what you stand for, right? You take great pride in your athletic and activities departments, regardless of outcome on the field or on the stage, when you value teamwork, inclusion, and the community. It's about everyone, it's about that inclusion piece. So, if you have a mission statement, that's a great place to start. But then, you want to make sure that you have some guiding principles, and that's where the Positive Coaching Alliance comes in. Because we have three distinct guiding principles. And we'll talk about how they blend into each one of the, right, workshops that we'll be able to do. We'll talk about this elm tree of mastery, we'll talk about how we fill the emotional tank, and then, we focus on how we all honor the game. So, whether you're a coach, whether you're a player, whether you're a parent, we all do this. And we all know how these things apply to us. So, before I go any further, any questions about what I've shared with you so far? Okay, we're doing okay? This is the research, and this is what tells us athletes, students want out of the activities they're a part of. They want to feel connected to their teammates and their coaches. "I want to know that I belong, I want to know that I matter." They want to feel that they can improve, so "I can learn, I can grow, and I can get better." Some of our students, some of us in this room, have a fixed mindset where we think we're born talented or we're not, we're smart or we're not. And that could be furthest from the truth. And so, we want to make sure that all of our students know, "I can learn, I can grow, I can get better." Not just if I try hard, but if I have good coaching and good teaching. I'm not the most number-smart person in the world, and I can try really, really hard to get better, but my effort isn't enough. I need a good teacher that can teach me what I need to learn to improve in that area. And then, the final piece is, they want to feel proud of acting with integrity. That means when I pull on the Princeton jersey or I represent my school, I'm proud to represent it, because everyone I've surrounded myself makes me proud in how they're acting, how they're behaving, and how they show up. If your students had those three things, what do you think would happen?
Maybe feelings of success, whether they win or lose.
Yeah, okay, so they feel successful. What else?
Just a climate, a positive climate would just really have a positive influence.
Sure, okay. So, they'd probably, they would probably show up more positive, and the outcomes would probably be more positive. Anything else?
Does it also probably carry into other aspects of their life?
Sure, yeah. It's interesting, because the high school that my kids attended, I saw the same kids in different sports act differently. Based on one coach clearly defined the culture, the expectation, right, and made it special, and another didn't. Now, I'm not blaming that on the coach, but it's same kids, different response. Now, I would say as well, right, it goes back to how are they supported by their parents? How are they supported by their teammates? There might be different teammates in different sports that act differently, okay? Do you think that those that are freshmen that participate in your activities would come back and participate next year?
For sure.
Yeah, so that's retention, right? Every business wants to have a retention of business, year over year. We know what we're going to get, right, with our business. The same thing with sports. So, those are what they want. This connects directly to creating a psychologically safe environment for our participants, right? Psychological safety is simply saying this, the first step is inclusion safety, right? That means I am embraced and I belong just because I have bone and I have flesh and I have hair and I have skin, just like you do. I am not embraced because I have more talent than you do. So, that's inclusion safety. That is feeling connected to your teammates and your coach. I had a young guy who played for me when I was coaching high school baseball, and I bumped into him at a Home Depot, and down the aisle, I hear, "Coach Swan!" And I turn around and it's Joe Hasling. And Joe comes up and goes, "Coach, it's so good to see you." This is 15 years after I coached him. He said, "I just want to tell you that being a part of the baseball team in high school was one of the most influential and special times for me when I was in high school. I was just so glad I had that opportunity." Now, what you don't know is Joe had three at-bats in two years. We kept Joe on the team because Joe made those around him better. I literally cut kids who weren't going to make my culture better. They were more talented, right? And so, Joe felt connected, embraced, and valued by his teammates and by his coaches. That's the inclusion safety. Learner safety is believing that I can improve and knowing that mistakes will happen. Mistakes are the key to learning, we all say that, but it's not so easy, right, to accept them. It's a lot easier said than it is to accept it. And so, what we want to teach our athletes is, it's okay to make mistakes, as long as you're making it at 100%, right? And then, you learn from those mistakes. What is that telling you? What do you need to do different, or what do you need to stop doing? That's learner safety. Contributor safety is this, let me play. I'm being a good person, I'm being a good citizen, I'm a good part of your community, I'm working hard in practice, I'm learning, looking to improve. Can I at least participate? And it doesn't mean, and we know at high school that there isn't equal participation, right? But just that my participation matters, my participation makes a difference. And then, that last piece is the, probably the most difficult part of psychological safety is, is it okay for young people to tell us, right, that they disagree? That they see it differently? And we're not going to be offended by that, but we're going to have some good dialogue so that they learn, right, that I can challenge things as long as we do it respectfully. So, we're driving toward those components of helping create the culture. So, as you look at this slide here, and it's kind of that sports spectrum, I'd love to hear from you, where do you, where do you see through your lens that the programs that you've been exposed to are on that spectrum? From a coach's, from a parent's, from a kid's perspective, right? Is it there's negativity, so our coaches seem angry and frustrated, our parents, our fans that scream at officials, and every time their kid doesn't get the playing time, they're calling the board or calling Darren or sending in an email? Is it win-at-all-costs? And so, coaches are focused on just winning? Maybe the kids, right, get no joy of just playing the sport because it's all about winning for them? Or is it in that norm area where coaches want to be positive and are striving to be positive, but they might not have the tools? Parents' intent are right, but maybe how they're showing up. And maybe players don't necessarily know. They want to, but they don't know how to. And then, where we would love to get to is that development zone. So, any thoughts on your part as to your observations? Experiences that you've had?
Some on the negativity side, a little bit.
Yeah.
Some on the norm side, those are the two, probably.
Sure. And are you seeing that from coaches, from players, from parents all across the board?
All across the board, not so much parents personally, I haven't witnessed.
Sure.
That, but coaches and kids for the negativity. Probably the norm for coaches, parents, and kids.
Okay, all right. So, I appreciate your courage for speaking up. I admire that. Anybody else?
You know, I look at it kind of as pleased but not satisfied. I think that as a whole, we're strong. I mean, everything, I mean, there's dozens of different activities and lots of different, you know, people leading and different stakeholders. There's definitely some areas that I would think would fall in every one of those zones.
Sure.
For sure.
So, it would, it could potentially be then that just not everybody's aligned.
Yeah, it'd be awesome if they all aligned, but I don't think that's a true statement.
I think it really depends even on.
Say that, I'm sorry, say that again, Eric.
It'd be awesome if they all aligned, but I don't think that's necessarily a true statement until you get, I mean, you're going to need 100% buy-in from everyone, all parties involved, for there to be true alignment.
Yeah, but I will tell you that culture isn't everybody does it. Culture is most people do it.
I would think that most of our activities are probably, coaches would probably be in the norm. Some a little bit above. The parents are what, and I think the kids, the kids a lot are the norm or above, but I think it's more the parents that are win-at-all-costs or the negativity zone more than anyone, to tell you the truth.
So, Eric, back to your, right, everybody buying in. Sometimes what we see is squeaky, squeaky wheel gets the grease, right? That we have a great, large population of parents who are doing the right thing and get it, and then, there's a few that don't. Because I've done the parent workshops, and I feel like I'm preaching to the choir. And I know that there's people that aren't in the room that should be in the room. So, the challenge becomes, how do we get people there, right? And how do we make sure that then, we can create, as an example, people who want to stand up and be culture keepers? I, as a parent, have sat in the stands and watched parents of my kids' friends or teammates not acting the right way, and because I know what I know, I can find the right time to have a conversation with them about, do you remember that parent meeting at the beginning of the year? Remember where we all agreed on what the most important principles were and how we were going to behave? With all due respect, that's not it. So, understand that impact. Now, that takes a little bit of courage, right? But I would agree with you as well. You probably have a lot of parents that are in the norm area, and then, there's a few that are some outliers there. Any other thoughts?
I think we see a little bit of each of them. But I think from a student standpoint, where they get that development zone, they are loving that sport, and they're giving it their all. And I, and you see these kids in different activities, and yes, you can tell a difference in these kids from one sport to the other. And I think a lot of it has to do with your coaches. And once they get positive, they're gaining that confidence. Once they have that confidence, they can take it to the next level.
Yeah.
Because they believe in themselves, somebody else believes in them.
Yeah, okay, all right, okay.
Well, for me, it seems like so many things come back to communication, right? And like, I'm superintendent, so the thing that I struggle with, and it's kind of a pet peeve of mine, is when folks refuse to follow the integrity of the chain of communication. You know, it seems like for some folks, it's much easier to, instead of having an uncomfortable conversation, you know, with the coach or following that chain or encouraging your student or your child to have that conversation with the coach.
Yeah.
To jump 10 steps to the superintendent.
Right.
Which tends then to be an email that takes me a half an hour to read through, because I can read the emotion, I mean, you can, there's so much tied into it.
Yeah.
You know, they love their kid, and sports and activities are such an emotional thing, they're so invested in it. And then, it's just launching this huge explosion.
Right.
And just trying to get things back to the best way to solve an issue.
Yeah, yeah. I think the opportunity that you have is PCA can provide some tools and resources, and in some ways, some enlightening of your parents, of your coaches, of your students, so that they understand how to advocate for themselves, how parents can help their children advocate for themselves, right? So, as we continue here, I'd love to get a little bit more of your feedback and your thoughts. But we start with, or we'll start here with, a coach development program. We want to align the coaches around those three principles that we talked about, right? So, when I say positive coaching, what comes to mind for you? What do you think of would be the definition of positive coaching?
Always be encouraging.
Okay, so, Eric, we're encouraging. What else?
Inclusion.
Inclusion.
Focus on growth.
Focus on growth.
Technology, what everyone is good at and what they can also work towards.
Sure, yeah, okay.
Knowledgement.
Also have a focus on winning.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean.
I don't think any of your students participate in things just to be mediocre. So, let's not make a mistake to think that this isn't about winning. You can win with this culture and with this environment, absolutely, right? Now, someone who came from the culture as being coached in blind obedience, "Do it because I told you to do it," it worked, because that was the culture at the time. What we don't understand, or some coaches don't understand, is athletes have changed for the better. They want to know the why behind the what, and what's in it for me, and that's not selfish. It's just taking the time as a coach to make sure I don't tell people to do things because that's what I want them to do, but I make sure they understand the why behind the what, and they understand the benefits to the team, to themselves, to the sport, when they do those things. So, at Positive Coaching Alliance, we talk about creating an atmosphere that supports the best possible performance, whatever that is. So, that obviously means we're competitive, if there's a scoreboard. We're focusing on doing our best to win, but understanding that we don't always control results. I've coached a lot of teams that we've played horribly and won. I've coached teams that we've played wonderful and lost. I felt better about the losses than I did about the wins. Because at the end of the day, that's what I wanted to see, is my team perform at its best level. My oldest son played football at Tito Grace, back when they were moving up classes. And when he was a sophomore, they were 4A. And when he was a sophomore, they were 4A? When he was a junior, they were 5A? And won the state championship? When he was a senior, they were 6A? And got beat twice during that year by Eden Prairie? Once at the beginning of the year and once in the semifinals? And I remember going to a meeting with their coach, Jeff Ferguson? And I remember parents saying, "I don't think it's a good idea for us to move up?" "Because my kid's not gonna get to win a state championship." And Jeff Ferguson looked at everyone and said? "The goal of Totino Grace's football program is not to win state championships? But it's to grow men through football." And why want our boys to be able to compete at the highest level we believe they possibly can? Now, subsequently, as years have moved on? The demographics of Totino Grace has changed. They went from 1,000 students to less than 700. They can't compete anymore at that level? And they've made a choice to move back down? Not so they can win championships? But so they can be as competitive as they possibly can, right? So, that's the focus of positive coaching. For double goal coaches? It's striving to win, but teaching life lessons? And asking myself, am I willing to lose in order to teach the life lesson? Sometimes I have to make that choice. And am I willing to allow everyone to participate as freshmen and sophomores? So they can grow and they can get better? And we might lose a few more games? To help them grow and develop to be better as juniors and seniors? And maybe that translates into winning a few more games? I always tell coaches? Don't spend any of your time telling your players? When they're 8, 12, 15, 17, 18? You'll really appreciate this when you're older. This is a great life lesson? It'll happen organically. I shared with Darren, my oldest son Brennan? Who is a physical therapist and played baseball up at St. John's? When he graduated from St. John's? All of his friends were getting married, buying houses, having apartments, having cars, have jobs? He was living at home with his parents? Driving over to Concordia, St. Paul every day? Coming back home, eating dinner and spending three hours in his room? Studying? For three straight years? But he told me one time, "Dad? I learned to have this focus on my long-term goal? And the commitment and really the discipline that it's taken me to bear down on this?" Playing sports? And through some great coaches? So, it happens organically at some point in time. So, one of the things, or one of the principles that we talked about is this elm tree of mastery? And it's really helping us, our coaches and our parents and our players? Understand these three things. I can't control results? Through great effort? Through good learning and development? I can impact the outcome of the game? But I can't always control the results? I can control my effort? So, that's mastery, that's driving toward mastery. There's a tendency to compare to others? And it could be, I'm comparing myself to other teams that are in the conference? That might frankly, have more numbers and be better than us? But what we can focus on is we can focus on learning and growing and developing and getting better. And then the last piece of this? Is this elm tree of mastery teaches coaches, teaches parents and teaches athletes? That mistakes are okay. In order to play high school football? You have to play with your hair on fire? And when you do, you're going to make mistakes? And those are absolutely okay? As long as it's made with maximum effort? And you're able to extract and learn? And we can help overcome some of those mistakes as well? So, that's one of those key principles that will intertwine into the coach's focus. Then, we want to make sure that they have this double go coach toolkit? And so, we'll give them a toolkit and access to information? That will allow them to focus on rewarding effort and learning? Talk about it early and often and how important it is, and then reward it? We'll talk about a magic ratio? And that is just filling the emotional tank of your players? So, the research tells us? That in any relationship that you're in? There needs to be a five to one ratio of positives? To one withdrawal? And when that happens? There's a higher level of productivity? There's a higher level of effort and participation? And it's the key to success? Whether it's in the classroom or whether it's on the field? It doesn't mean that we don't fix things that are broken? And make sure that we're focusing on the things that we're not doing well? But I need to make sure that it's truthful, specific praise and filling that emotional tank? And then we want to help them? Help their players by modeling honoring the game? How do I make sure we respect referees? We respect opponents? We respect the rules? We respect officials? We respect teammates? And we respect self? My brother Greg was an NCAA and high school football official for 25 years? He recently retired? I went to games and listened to people talk about my family heritage around things? I didn't know really existed, right? And so, how are we respectful to referees and umpires? To opponents, right? To ourselves as players? All of those things are keys for double go coaches? And then, when it comes to helping parents, right? The importance of having a structured parent meeting at the beginning of each season? And laying out some of the expectations? And Ben, as you said? Making sure that people understand, what's the process of communication? And encouraging them, as I would in a parent workshop? To help by advocating for their son or daughter? To make sure that they have a conversation with their son or daughter before they intervene? I had a young guy, when I was coaching baseball? My senior catcher, before the season started, was drinking? So, he got suspended for four games? So, we had a sophomore catcher who was starting for those first four games? After those four games? Our catcher came back, he started the next game? And the dad grabbed me, the sophomore catcher's dad said? "I don't get it. This guy lets the whole team down and he comes back and he plays, right? And my kid's now sitting on the bench." You know, he's a great football player? He could be playing, getting ready for football season in the weight room? I said, "I've had a conversation with Joe? But I'll have a conversation as well with him again if you would like me to." Joe was his son. I grabbed Joe coming out of locker room? And I said, "Joe, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page of what your role is here." And he just looked me in the eye and he said, "Coach? I just want to do whatever I can do to help the team make the state tournament." And I went back to his dad and I said? "If you would've talked to Joe? You never would've had a conversation with me." So, how do we encourage them to have those conversations? And then when it's time to talk to a coach? I will tell you that even at a college level? I practiced the conversation with my son on how to address the coach? Based on he didn't know where he stood? And didn't know whether he was in the mix? So, there's ways that we can help the parents as well? Recruit those culture keepers? And then help them understand, how do I nip those situations in the butt? When somebody's on the sidelines? Trying to coach their son or daughter? While I'm trying to coach them? How do I have a, right? Respectful conversation around them? And they understand the impact of when they do that? Parent program is really, again, using the same principles? But here's the first exercise I have the parents do? And I'm gonna ask you to do this exercise real quick here? And that is, for your daughter or son? What goal would you have for her or him in this season, right? Can be more than one? And our student council? You can kind of take a look at that same list? Because that's part of the exercise as well, okay? Does anybody want to share with me, right? What their goal might be for their daughter or their son? Melissa?
Mine would be to learn life lessons. My daughter recently had hip surgery?
Yeah, she told me I love that.
And getting back to running? And just fighting not only through the surgery and all the healing? But fighting to get back to? I told her, "I don't care if you quit after the first run or the first meet." Just do the first meet so that you can say? "I worked through all of this and I'm done, and I did it." Because I feel like that lesson is more important than any of the other beating times? Or making it through?
Sure, yeah. And our conversation over there, right? It kind of resonates through life? Because she was at TCO? And I was at TCO with a habitable knee replacement? But two weeks before my surgery there? And I did my pre-op physical? They found out I had cancer? So, I had surgery for that? And then just a week ago, some things resurfaced? And that's why, this isn't because my wife got angry at me? This was just some more cancer that had to be removed? But the resilience of that, right? Those are great life lessons. Any other things that you'd want to?
I think gain self-confidence is a huge, huge thing? That carries through everything, not just work.
Was it too much to ask as a parent to have, to say all of them?
No.
Nope?
They're all great.
Sure, yeah. So, what we do with your parent workshop is? We, and we'll provide this for your parents to go through this exercise? But here's the flip side of it? So, they share what their goals and their aspirations are? Now, they're gonna take that same sheet home to their athlete? And have their athlete do the same exercise? Without looking at what the parents' goals and aspirations are? And then, it's a catalyst for a conversation? If those are the things that you want? First of all, share why? Second of all is, then the question becomes? And how can I support that? As your parent, how do you want me to show up? What can I do to help you achieve the goals that you have set for yourself? Because what we say versus what we do? Behavior versus intent? Remember the story I told you about my dad? My dad loved us? But it really caused some uncomfortable moments? And so, he wasn't necessarily showing up? How I would want him to show up? To support me? I knew he was supporting me? So, we asked the parents to have this conversation? Use it as a catalyst? To be aligned around, how can I best support you? And then, go back to that? Ask your child, "How am I doing?" Right? When I've asked my kids, "How am I doing?" They're like, "Dad, just keep doing what you're doing." "I like the fact that you don't sit by anybody else, right? And you're just really quiet? And you're just there." And I go, "Good." Because I want you to know that inside, I'm clapping for you? And inside, when something goes bad? I'm as disappointed as you are? But it's not my deal? I probably would get myself in trouble for this? But I've never wore any of the swag? When my kids participated in high school? Because I'm not on the team? I'm just there to watch them and support them? I'm not asking anybody else to consider that, right? Because I think it's great to show your spirit and your student colors? But this isn't about me? This is about them? And this is an opportunity for me to just sit back? And watch them learn and watch them grow? So, those are my three kids, by the way? The one in the middle is my son Brennan? Who I told you about? Who was at St. John's and now is a physical therapist? The one on the left is my son Connor? And through high school? Connor was cyber bullied? And has some extreme struggles with mental health? And it took the fun and the joy out of sports? For him? He's just trying now to figure out? How does he get his life back on track? And so, the impact when we talk to players? And one of the things that we'll share with players is? How can I be a positive digital citizen? How can I make sure that I know the impact that I have? Because he had teammates? While he was going through some of his mental health struggles? Tell him he was a cancer to the team? Because he's not showing up to these workouts? That weren't mandatory, right? So, we need to understand and appreciate those things? And then on the right is my daughter Maran? She's my favorite child? I love them all the same, but I like her best? She's pursuing her masters in social work? Women and gender psychology at the University of Wisconsin-Madison? And you want to talk about the power of social media? Every night? And this is a story I share with students? Every night, for the last four years? Between 10:30 and midnight? And I'm usually laying on the couch watching something on TV? My phone goes off? And on my phone is her emoji? With the little kiss lips and the heart? Never misses a night? You think there isn't power in that? You think that knowing at that moment, she's thinking of me? Right? And in her way of communication is reaching out? Makes all the difference in the world? So, now you know why she's my favorite child? So, with parents, right? We're talking about teaching them to praise effort and attitude? Take a great amount of pride in that? Fill the emotional tank of all players? So, not just your own child? But fill the emotional tank of other players? Make sure you even are filling the emotional tank of opponents? And then I give them three pluses and a wish? What they found in sports? Is that the worst moment for high school athletes? Is the ride home with mom and daddy? It's called the PGA, the post-game analysis? They don't want to talk about the game? And if they do, they should, right? Start the conversation? But sometimes, parents do? So, I say you get three pluses and one wish? If you can't come up with three pluses about what you saw in their performance? Of effort and attitude and hard work? Then you get no wish? But your wish has to sound something like this? "I wish you weren't so hard on yourself when you strike out." So, again, providing them with a toolkit? To help them be more successful and shape the culture? So, right? We're gonna model talking about opponents respectfully? Cheering good plays from both teams? Showing respect to officials? Talking about teammates and coaches respectfully? Don't allow your player to get caught in the middle? Avoid that PGA that I talked about? And commit yourself to being a culture keeper? And then the last program? What I think is probably one of the most important programs? Is around the student and athlete program? And so, here? We're gonna use those same principles again? The difference is, is we're helping them understand? How do I make myself better? So I can make my teammates better? So I can make my community and my team? Or the game I choose to play better? It's the same principles that we've talked about? But it's now connecting it to themselves? And one of the things we incorporate? When it comes to making my teammates better? Is taking a look at? How do I leverage social media? Not in, "Don't do it." Not in, "It should go away." But in, "It's here to stay, so now I have a choice." I can either use it to lift others up? Or I can use it to tear others down? And so, how do I use it in a very, very powerful way? To fill the emotional tank? Of everyone that I am a teammate with or are students with? So, as I've wrapped up here? And hopefully, timing is good?
Yeah.
I'd love to entertain any questions you might have? Any thoughts, any takeaways? Any concerns? Before I let you continue and I honor your time?
Just like to say thank you for coming?
Sure.
Great presentation.
Yeah, my pleasure.
You know, he shared it? But I mean, it's just important for everybody to know now? There's different audiences and different stakeholders involved? And I believe that the board is the first group to receive the training? And we asked you, just from, for time constraints? Maybe you shortened it a hair, I'm not sure? So, some of the others might need more information associated with it? So, who's the next group that would? The coaches now? Would receive additional training? And one thing? You know, we've moved procedurally with a coach's handbook? And as we, our coaches learn some of this information? There might be some things we can kind of funnel in and filter into that as well?
Yep, there'll be coaches, captains, parents? And one or, there might be one on the same night? You know, it might be a captain's parents back and forth.
So, not all of the participants get the training?
Coaches will attend the captains and the parents? Like, coaches will be invited to all of the sessions?
But the student athletes is just the captains, not all?
They can, they'll come with the last one? But there's a special one? There's a special captain, student leader one?
Okay.
That would be?
Can athletes part, like, can athletes also listen to this?
Yes, yes.
Is it important for everyone to hear this and acknowledge it?
And I think that we'll have to look at, through this, with the lens of sustainability.
Yes.
Because, you know, we did move towards this, what, four, five, six years ago?
Yeah, we're a generation removed from that. So we had three or four.
I think we just need to talk about, how do you continue this on?
And Ben, just so you know, that, right, while there's this initial double goal coach, and then your second goal parent, and then your triple impact competitor, there's year over year additional curriculums that somebody doesn't have to go through the double goal coach every year, right? It could focus on one of those principles and focus on positive motivation. I will tell you though, and we all know, right, that it's not a one and done. And I went to this last year, so I know everything I need to know, and I've applied everything I need to know. Because when I have people who've come back and I say, hey, show a hands, who was here last year? So tell me, one of the things that you learned last year that you applied this year and how it led to your success. Either people are shy, or they just don't remember all the things that are there, right? So, you know, I've worked with organizations where you have to go through your recertification every year, because you just don't remember it all in one year. But your ability to sustain it, you're absolutely right, is the key. Any other questions or thoughts or?
No, that, another thing that I really liked, and I thank you for coming, is after the game and that car ride home, is letting the kids talk. Because there's times when they tell you something.
Sure.
And the next time you're there, you're actually looking for that. Oh, that's what they're talking about. Oh, I see what you meant. And then, you know, stuff that they feel they did well on, and then you can reinforce that. Yes, this is when it happened here and.
Sure.
You know, it's, it's so much better hearing it from the kids and letting them speak.
Sure.
Letting them express their feelings.
Yeah. And again, right, we can encourage it, a conversation amongst equals, right? But for people to embrace that, and as we well know, we have skin in the game, right? And we love them so much. But, you know, my daughter Mara, when she was a senior in high school, said, I'm not going to tell you anything because you just want to fix it. And I'm like, that's what I do. And she said, no, no, I just want you to listen. And I said, thanks for sharing that. Is it okay if I ask for permission to fix it from time to time? Right? And she said, yeah, but know that I might say no. And that was great, because it put me in the right frame of mind. I wasn't doing it because I was trying to step on her toes. I just was trying to do what I thought I needed to do as a parent. So the more that we can talk about, the opportunity to use that exercise, right, to have a conversation, the catalyst for a conversation to understand, how should I show up as a parent? To have a conversation around, when is the right time to speak to someone, right, such as a coach? Because I share with them is, as a parent, I'm never going to talk to a coach about whether my son or daughter is playing the right position, or how much playing time they're getting, or what their offensive philosophy is. What I will have a conversation go around is when I feel like there's a behavior that's not helping them be the best person. Locker room behavior as an example, and profanity and things being said in the locker room, I will interject at that point in time. That has nothing to do with, right, any delusion of grandeur that they're going to be a great college player or professional player. Only 3% of athletes ever play after high school. So for many, this is, these are golden years. And helping parents understand, it goes by really, really fast.
Yes, it does.
And for you to be able to just sit back and enjoy it and then create memories, but it's their memories, right, that kind of impact us. Any other questions, any other thoughts before Darren and I get out of the way?
I have a quick question. I completely agree with what you're, the sustainability part, really looking forward to that. But I was just wondering, do you have like, something to help the kids? Like, is there an app or a handbook or something that?
PCA has a triple impact competitor book, but.
Okay.
The app that they have gives coaches, parents, and players direct access to, right, what's called the PCA Dev Zone. And it has all types of articles, all types of handouts, all types of video clips on any topic that you would want to research as a player, as a coach, as a parent. So it's, I mean, that's worth the price of admission right there, just to have access.
There's a lot of tools on that too, that you could access as a parent or as a coach. And the books, I've read the books, and I think that as a parent, I mean, I also coach too, I guess, but reading the other books, like the coach's book, the parent book, the student athlete book, it kind of gave you perspective into all three people in the realm there.
You know.
I liked reading all the books. It kind of gives you a different perspective on reading.
Eric, I think that's where it all ties together, right? For you, because you're not just looking at through your coach's lens, but you're understanding, right, from a player's perspective, from a parent's perspective. I certainly know that I went to parent meetings, and all of a sudden, there's this kind of adversarial approach that the coach is taking, as if I'm a bad person because I'm a parent. And it can be furthest from the truth. So how do we help coaches create an alliance? Because we both have the best interest of our players at heart. So how do we make sure, again, we're on the same page? And what I'm doing is supporting you, and what you're doing is supporting me as well. When you do it like you're doing it, and Darren, I don't know if I'll have the privilege of being able to come up and facilitate your workshops, but I can tell parents what I've told players. I can tell players what I've told parents. I can tell coaches what we've shared, so we can kind of cross pollinate that message, just like Eric, you are with reading those three books. Again, that creates an alignment of people are on the same page, they're hearing the same message, right? So there's a little different spin, but it's the same thing. Anything else before?
So I just sent an email to Darren, so we'll connect tomorrow. But I think it's important that we communicate this out to our community and our families that we are investing.
Yes.
In this. And so, you know, we have a Tiger Times will go out this Friday. You know, I'd like to get some kind of a blurb out there. If you have a cool, I'm sure you got some kind of a video, promotional video or something we could throw in there. But I think we need to communicate that we feel like this is important enough that we're investing resources in this.
And to that, Ben, you're spot on with that, is I will tell you, I have come to communities and I've come to parent workshops, and there's five parents in the room. Right? It doesn't matter to me if there's five parents in the room, or if there's 500 parents in the room. You're getting the same, you're getting the same show, right? But what I'm saying is, I don't know if you're working with Amy or Kristi.
Yeah, Amy.
But how did them to say, how do I best market this? Because Ben, I think that's what you're saying, is how do we make sure we get the biggest bang for our buck? Because people know we're making an investment, but people are showing up so that they're hearing the message. So whatever they, whatever PCA needs to do to support that, just let her know.
Amy's been awesome.
Yeah. Anything else?
Does the PCA also, does it go into the college athlete, or is it just for the high school?
It's typically been youth through high school. I know that in our triple impact competitor, oftentimes, we just talk about, and again, on the social media messages, 40% of colleges have a IT-trained Ivy League, right, person who is looking into the social footprint of everyone who's applying for their college. And they're declining or accepting students based on what they see, because they say, I'd rather have a one-day problem to have to have that conversation than a four-year problem to have that person on my campus. So it's talking about, right, the impact of your brand from a social media perspective, but it doesn't extend into the college level, although PCA has done work with specific college programs and college sports.
Suppose that's a whole different animal when you get into college.
Yeah.
Back to like advertising or whatever, I also think it's important that we let students know that we're, like, coaches are wanting to help us, wanting to be more positive, and they're actually trying to make an impact. I think that's important.
Sure.
To know that, like, they want to help us.
Yeah. And if you can get the buzz out there, right? To let students know that coaches are, hey, let students know, talk to your parents, right? Get them there. I know that there's been some places where it's part of another event, right? So it's just a rotation of students, parents, coaches. So whatever you feel would work best. But I can't encourage you enough to, the more that are there, the more that are going to hear the message, share the message with others, and have access to the tools and resources. And, you know, as we looked at the high school spectrum, by no means, you know, did I pull out of, boy, we've got a lot of work to do. It's just, we're right where we need to be, but we can push it just a little bit further, right? And then how do we, you know, Darren said this conversation with me, Ben, you brought it up, how do we sustain it? How do we make sure that year over year, right, it just becomes the way that we do things?
Another thing, question that just popped with my head, does this apply just for sport coaches? Or, like, I'm in speech, so like, my speech coach, would he also be included in this?
I would say that anyone who is leading should be a part of it, because the same dynamics exist. My daughter Mara, who you saw made her high school varsity hockey team as a freshman and her varsity soccer team as a freshman. And after the season was over, she came to me and she said, I don't want to do either anymore. And I said, do you know how much money I spend? I didn't say that out loud. But I said, do you know how much time it takes me to clear off the ice out back of the house and the 5,000 watts of halogen that I put up there so you can skate, right? I didn't say any of those things, but I said, what do you want to do? And her high school had a high-level show choir, right? And so she said, I want to be a part of the show choir. And I thought, I went to your recitals when you were little, and you didn't dance very well. So what's, but when I saw her on stage for the very first time and the smile on her face, then it was okay. While I would have rather been sitting in a cold ice arena, I was sitting in some auditorium, I think it was in Eau Claire, Wisconsin. And if you think hockey parents are crazy, you should see show choir parents. There's no way I was going to have Mara's dad bedazzled on the back of my jacket, right? So, yes, I would agree. You want to get anyone and everyone that's there, because it all applies. Matter of fact, those show choir people work harder than any sport I ever saw people working in, so. Darren, anything else before I get out of your way?
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
Okay. Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to number five, there are no statistics comments, and we'll move on to board member committee reports. We have the, I attended the MRA Fall Meeting, and we had our public engagement committee meeting.
All I had was finance on the sixth and then public engagement. I had attended a C executive meeting and public engagement tonight and agenda planning.
I had the finance with that, and then also the agenda planning.
No committees. Eric?
I have nothing.
Okay. We'll move on into student council report, please.
All right. We kind of got a lot, but it's all good things. Tomorrow, student council is doing kindness and chalk. We've done it in years past. We write a bunch of positive messages, so right when you lock in the door, kids get greeted and all this fun chalk. It's also a way for student council to bring in a bunch of kids, because they're like, why are you out here in the cold doing this? Join student council. Also, the college fair, this isn't really student council related, but it's high school related. Over 70 post-secondary institutions will invade the Tiger Gym, so to speak, from private schools to public schools to technical colleges. So we have the whole variety. Seniors and juniors can go, and so can sophomores, I believe. It's really cool. I'm super pumped. They have like a little barcode, so each college will have a table, you scan the barcode, and it gives, you swap information. So college gets your information, and you get the college's information. So it's really cool, and I personally am super hyped for that.
School improvement and student council over the last few weeks have been working on a suicide prevention slideshow, as this month is suicide prevention month. So we've been kind of putting out resources for students inside the school and outside of the school. We've also been making toolware of like, how you can notice signs that someone's like suffering from a illness, or having like suicidal thoughts, et cetera. We also have been getting ready for homecoming. That's coming up next month, October 6th is homecoming. Find out the candidates for the homecoming court this Friday at our student council meeting. So we're pretty pumped for that. It's been a process, but we're getting there. We also recently got a winter formal approved last week at last Friday's meeting. So this winter formal will take place on January 26th. It's snow days usually, but this year can be a formal, so kind of like how Malacca has a morph and like that kind of thing. It's just more like a semi-formal compared to like prom and stuff like that, so, yeah.
And then people I've been hearing have been wondering, I don't know who would know this, but the bathrooms in the high school, do we know when those are going to be done? Because it's a pain to have to walk across the school to use the bathroom and.
Congestion during passing time.
We're anticipating those to be done, I believe, the very end of September or first week of October.
October 6th is the projected date.
Perfect. Thank you. That answers a whole lot of questions. All right. The next thing, this isn't student council related, but we do have a new club at Princeton High School. It's called Letters of Love. And Letters of Love, its purpose is to basically make cards for people in hospitals that are fighting different kinds of things, or just kind of send them positive messages, letting them know that there are people that are thinking about them, that they're going to get through this, and they're not alone, and that kind of thing. Another topic is a fundraiser that we are looking to put together by Leo Club. It's called, it's going to be like a walkathon slash wheelathon. It's to raise money for people with disabilities. So, and all that money will go towards families that need extra money, whether it be to like supply wheelchairs for their families, or like all their special equipment to help them kind of like have better lives and stuff like that. Because those kinds of things, those prices, they rack up, medical bills, they rack up, and it's really difficult to afford things, especially with inflation and everything else, so.
Just to get them their basic needs.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
I think that's everything. Do we have any questions?
Any questions?
Ideas?
You have new advisors?
Oh, yeah, we do have new advisors. Ms. McGathie and Ms. Fuller, yes, they are stepping in for Ms. Barber and Ms. Brandt. They've been a help. It's certainly adjustment. They're getting used to their roles, and we're kind of helping each other out, but I'm sure it'll be, they'll be great.
Good, good, good. Any questions for student council? I would like, when you guys finish the suicide prevention slideshow, I mean, I would like that sent to us if we could.
Yeah, for sure.
Next week or this week, hopefully.
We could get it to you this Friday at the end of the meeting.
Sure. If you send it to Ben, he can get it to the rest of us.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. You can key now? Good. All right. Superintendent Report.
You know, we're getting into a routine, lots of work that goes into getting the year started. And of course, the first week is lots of kind of learning the lay of land and getting routine set. And I think right now, everybody's nose of the grindstorm, and we're working hard. And I think, I think the message continues to be to move to greatness, take that next step. We had a strong administrative PLC today, really focused on data and standards and instructional strategies, making sure that we're all on the same page in our teacher evaluation processes and our focuses in the classroom. So that's going to be something that we're going to just continue to press on, because we're pleased with what we do, but we're not satisfied, we need to do better, as it relates to student achievement. And that's really going to continue to be a strong focus for us. I have, you know, making the rounds, have the opportunity to talk to students in different capacities and different stakeholder groups. We also had an opportunity to meet with all the bus drivers, or many of the bus drivers last week, and that was good as well. I think that we're settling into transportation, which is one of the bigger projects for us to get the year up and running. Want to remind the board that we have a copy and conversation this Thursday at 9:00 AM, and that will be here. And we're hopeful that we'll get some people to come and talk about education in Princeton public schools. Sometimes I get a lot of people, sometimes I get very few. And the last time I had one, I didn't get any except for one board member.
Eric was there.
Yeah. Eric was there. So I mean, that was good. So we'll see.
We had good copying.
It was good, good copying conversation. So, you know, we'll continue to. So, you know, we'll continue to get out and talk to people and, and offer as many opportunities for communications to take place. So we had a long board agenda yet, so I'm going to stop my remarks there unless you have any questions.
All right, any questions then? All right, we'll move on then to approve the agenda as presented. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion made by Deb, by Melissa, second by Chad. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will move on to discuss and act on the board meeting minutes from September 5th. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Motion made by Don, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Chad, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Move on to approve the consent agenda as presented. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion made by second. Deb, second by Melissa, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We move then to the information part of our meeting and the middle school update and welcome Charlie.
Thank you. Emily, can you hear me?
Yep, I'm here. I'll get Charlie's presentation up.
Okay, thanks. Sure. Well, it's been up, I want to thank you for having me. It's been a great start to the year. I think the, the thing that, you know, really comes to mind with the, the start of the year is just the energy that comes with having the, the students back. And I'll also preface this with there are a lot of slides, I'm only going to talk about a few of them. An English teacher with a lot of slides, someone probably should put me on the clock, but I, I really do want to provide a multiple visual. So there's going to be some slides in here that are just kind of a different visual on some of the same stuff I'll think about. So when you see 38 slides, no, I'm not going to talk about all 38, I'm only going to talk about whatever it is. The first couple, I don't really need to talk about either much. I think it's loading here. Okay. And the first couple are just basically the alignment of our plan for this year. And what we're focused on is really in line with the district's plan. So I'm not going to talk about visuals that you already know well. So if we go on to the next visual here with the Princeton paradigm continues to ground us in our practices. And who's clicking, by the way?
You're going to have to just tell her what slides you want to go to.
She's trying to get you through them. I'll, I'll go ahead and. The information you do want to know, we, this is going to, we're going to preface this. So there's 745 students in the building that's up three from last year, but you can see the configuration is different. We have many in our sixth, fewer in our eighth. And so huge props to some of our eighth grade teachers who are swinging down to sixth grade for a couple of sections to pick up some of our allied classes there. When we go into the next slide, it should share a little bit about our focus, our theme this year, which is focus. And when I say there's 745 students in the building, I want to point out that the quote at the bottom is a proverb, not a metaphor. So when we say we chase two rabbits, you will not catch either one. And we have 745 students, they are not rabbits, we know that. But in the building, some days you might swear, who knows who let whatever into the building with that energy? Because it's a lot of fun and it's very contagious, keeps us young. We did decide on focus as a student learning team because I think it is important to acknowledge, but not dwell on what we've been to over the past several years. And so we look at, you know, changing modes. We look at the world around us changing and a lot of the noise, Ben refers to a lot of the noise. We really are in the business of building the best experience for students. So the conditions are strong for learning and then getting to, getting really down to it, what makes, what makes instruction great? And that really comes down to students are learning and they're excited about it. So that's our focus for the year. On to the next slide, and we see some of the, the pieces there. One of our focuses has been in a combination of different things. We've talked about the many layers of delivering an equitable education. And that word gets kind of hijacked sometimes. We wanted to define that word for our staff again and our students here in a number of different ways. But I, I quote Buruikun Fele, who is a strong educational leader who's written some outstanding books. But it's giving each student our best as we commit to meeting students where they are as they are. And that's kind of how we define it. So it's more than a lens, it's a mentality. And students will hear it over and over again. Just about every time we have a class meeting, we talk about our belief that every kid gets to grow academically without leaving a piece of who they are at home. And so we want to know our students because when they are themselves, they connect the learning better because they can connect it on an individual level. So that's something that we continue to work on. One of the things I'll name this year, while there's many layers to it, the one thing that transcends every single student and every single group that we can find within our, our building is that the greatest inequity is found with students who lack basic literacy. And that is really huge. The heaviness of that, you'll see it with our staff and we talk about it. If we don't have the basic literacy, it is incredibly difficult for students to be who we want them to be, which is, we want them to be, we want them to be happy. And we want them to be satisfied with who they are. And we want every single door open to them when they leave our doors beyond Princeton. So it's heavy, but it's fun. And as we go on, we'll kind of see some of the things that we're hoping to do to make this happen. The next one here.
You tell me which one you want me to?
Sure, we're going to look at two different layers here. This is how we compare with the rest of the state in our reading data. And one of the things that we talked about, meeting students where they are, that has been an adjustment culturally as a staff that we've had to, you know, really adjust. And that is the belief that, okay, if I, if I start, if I, if I go back here to the starting line where kids have some gaps from a few of the last few years, how am I going to get to the finish line? And really empowering staff to feel like, hey, if you're seeing something that kids don't have, teach it. And they're doing a great job of that. But we also don't want to lose sight of the finish line and move that back because then we're lowering standards. So it's a real balance there. And we find the solution to be in our PLC roots. I'm going to talk about that a little bit later in what we do. But one of the things that you will see with our staff is that we're getting, you know, we're getting there. When you see the eighth grade outcome there, we are in the area of reading, getting to a point where our eighth graders launched last year. We saw them go from, you know, below the state average and we saw their growth. They're now 15% above the state average. Okay, so we're starting to see that happen and it doesn't happen overnight. While we love to pat our eighth grade staff on the back because they're amazing, we also recognize some of the sacrifices that sixth grade and seventh grade have made in the adjustments where maybe they're not teaching stuff at sixth grade level right away. But we're hoping that we build in those gaps as we go and then starting to see the, the effects here. So if we go on to the next slide, we'll see a different way of looking at reading here. We still see, in this case, we're looking at how we did in terms of this cohort. So we did see our sixth grade and seventh grade drop as a cohort. So that means, you know, from their fifth grade to sixth grade, they're down 3% and they're down 7%. So we're seeing that, that dip. And then as an eighth grade, and we'll talk about some of the programs that have been successful at the eighth grade level. We went up nine and a half percent as a cohort last year. Okay? So we have some work to do and our staff's embracing it, but we're seeing it improve quite a bit. Next slide here is math. And again, math, we went from below the state average, then our kids going to ninth grade, now above the state average by 8.7%. How do we do as a cohort? The next slide kind of shows us, and that is that I'm going to highlight, I'm going to start with the good stuff here. Eighth grade, 18.7% as a cohort in terms of number of students proficient on the MCAs. Okay? We did meet our math goal. And we saw just a slight decline in the sixth grade cohort, a slight bump in the seventh. And then overall, when you take that all into consideration, a growth of 2.27%. Modest, we need better, but we're getting there. And we'll talk about some of the things that we saw eighth grade that kind of have helped us there. Some of our new programs, we piloted a program at the eighth grade, eighth grade level that you heard about last spring with our Tiger Recovery that received the Star of Innovation Award at the state level this year, the Gold Level Award. And some of the things that I think I'll kind of come back to as I show you some of the action steps that we've incorporated this year that hopes to really capitalize on some of the things that we saw working in our eighth grade to expand along. So they were kind of our guinea pigs last year and a fun group to do that with, or rabbits, I guess. I'm staying with it. Continue on. The next slide. Science didn't have a lot in there as far as like comparative. We were almost 20% above the state average in science at a 46.7%. The thing about science, that, the last time that group would have taken that test was fifth grade and they did not take it because that was the COVID year. So we don't have any cohort data on that, but we did come up 20% above the state, close to 20% above the state average in the area of science. Huge, huge props to our science teachers. They have done all this mixing and matching as science has changed in different grade levels. So they've had to kind of roll with it and then kind of level out now to where those standards are settled into their respective grade levels. Go on to the next one here. I think we're, there we go. This is just some things that we've talked about as a group. What, what should we be paying attention to most? One of the things that we look at, getting comfortable with going with it, in addition to being comfortable with moving the starting line, one of the things that as we've been more grounded in data, our staff has gotten more comfortable with. One example, we looked at data and saw that kids were already rocking it in one area. And it was kind of like, well, do we need to teach it? And like, no, you keep going, you know? It doesn't mean you never cover it. They still have some of those concepts, but they could spend a unit of time, or they could spend their time on a unit of study that kids were struggling in. So using data to shift when we've already hit, students are showing us that they're ready to move on, we move on. We don't just do it because we've always done it that way before. And really pleased with staff in their recognition of that as they become more grounded in data. Scaffolding, kind of in, in short, what we're looking at doing there is, again, allowing students an opportunity if they're ready to launch and their classmates might be, you know, struggling with some of the basics. We don't want to be waiting, having students wait up for their classmates either. So a lot of times it's just layering our questioning with more analytical questions that students who've mastered some of the basics can go on to. And so they might be doing some of the same concepts, but just in a deeper way within the same classroom. And those are things that we're, you know, just doing with our, not only scaffolding, but then also with our tier two interventions. Tiger Recovery would be an example of tier two. Tiger Tune Up would be an example of tier two, and that's where kids can get additional help within the school day. The next thing that we start here is some focused PLC trainings that we're going to be starting tomorrow morning with our ELA teachers. They will be with Gabe Hackett, who's with the PLC Center. And we're coming in just with the, the basic before questions to talk as departments. What are you doing that's working? What do we still need to work on? And, you know, really getting back to, I think the biggest thing, we've spent a lot of time empowering our standards with those essentials. But now it's asking the question of each other, how did you do that? That's not the before question, but I think it's a simpler question. How did you pull that on? And then stealing from each other. Okay? Next slide here. Some of the things we feel like we did last year in addition to that is changing the culture of learning. And Tiger Recovery sent a message to kids that we are never giving up on your learning. So if you get through it, it, we don't believe in punitive measures. It's not trying to stick it to a kid who failed a class because they're already down enough. It's saying to a kid, we believe in you, but we got to try something different. So we did. And one of the other things we did is we celebrated the growth of every student. I go back and hearing about positive coaching today reminded me of our long jumping days. People used to look at kids who barely made it into the pit and we'd be celebrating like crazy because that's the first time the kid made it in the pit. And we had kids last year, we had one student who had a 703 as a seventh grader on the MCA reading, had an 856. What does that mean? Third percentile, fourth percentile somewhere roughly to meets standard. And then we use student voice, we asked the student, what was different? And one of the things that I, I still can see the student's face shocked. She shocked herself more than anything and she just said, well, it just, it just clicked. Well, it just clicked, comes down to some of where our action steps were. What did we find out from our students when we talked with them? I'll share a few examples of that here in just a moment, we'll keep going. That culture around excitement and growth. 89% of our eighth graders last year, by the way, improved. And by the way, this is not scientific. I can't really say this because they tell you, well, don't look at a 705 from last year and say that an 806 just because they changed. You can't really call that growth. Students, we have some of the brightest here. Okay, no, don't listen to this part here, you're a must. What we did do for kids is we're in a culture of high scores and video games and things like that, right? So we did put that out there for students where just, it's about your own growth. Okay, well, sometimes the seventh grade standards spiral. And so sometimes it's just a matter of they got it the second time. That's why you can't really say from year to year, it absolutely happened. But 89% of our kids in eighth grade grew by that standard, non-scientific, and got to be excited about their growth, got to celebrate their growth. Okay, they got a few, few extra coupons to go spend at the carnival that we had and some of the celebrations that we had. Okay, next one. I'm going to fly through a few of these here.
Which one do you want me to have her go to?
Go ahead.
I got, I got this up here.
Yep, so the, go past the data trends. These are all like just different ways that in sharing this with you, you can look at it, it's stuff I've just covered. We met our goal last year, we're going up another, we say 2% for our goal, but we're going to explode this year, okay? So hold me to it next year and tell me what happened, ask me what happened if we don't. But I'm really confident because we've got a good plan here. So next one, then after this one. All right, our action steps. One back here. We really, with focus, we had a page this long of action steps. We hadn't done a lot of spring cleaning. We went down to, we've got three plus a curriculum one, which is just ongoing. And we're going to, the staff has identified the idea of teaching students the value of taking the scenic route. And so in learning, we have, I mentioned the culture of high scores. Well, there's also in reading, seek and destroy. That's, that's, that was around when we were all kids too. Teacher asks a question, we read it, we find the answer, we put the answer down. Does that sound familiar to anybody? Okay. And right now annotating text is a way of helping kids to really invest in, you know, note taking and reading the implicit. It'll be the difference between explicit and implicit. They do pretty well in the explicit, we don't do as well in the implicit. So we're putting some time and energy, all staff will do that at least three times and we'll do that more in our ELA classes. Basic math skills practice, every student who walks in the building now, we have students still struggling with basic multiplication, addition, things like that. And as we see the first part of the year go on, it's kind of fun to watch the kids right now when they come into TA class. Instead of kind of waiting around, they get right to some practice on their basic skills. What we find is kids are multitasking right now in math because they're learning about solving equations while also trying to remember their multiplication tables, things like that. So if we can make that more automatic, that's a way to supplement that and we're, we're going to see that area of growth as well. And then the next slide kind of shows what three and four mean, which is with common expectations. Daily learning targets, really making sure of that. And then a grading retake process. Those of you who recall when we talked about going to grading for learning last year, we are looking at the sixth, seventh and eighth grade creating a better process for when students want to relearn and retake tests. Now, research is kind of divided on the value of retakes. If you do retakes, just by kid request or retake, they take it, they don't do well and it's not good for the culture of learning. If they relearn, re-practice and retake it, sometimes in a different format too, as we expand, give students choice, it's very, very strong. And as I listened to my daughter at St. Ben's kind of going through, they were, they were kind of panning, I kind of felt targeted. They were panning us for like allowing retakes. And I talked to the guy afterward, he, we kind of had a laugh about it. But what he was talking about where that doesn't help kids prepare for college, when I talked about what we do, I said, how many of your students go on and take their nursing boards? How many take their bar exams? How many take their, in my brother's case, how many times you take your driver's test? You take those multiple times sometimes. And so there's value in both. But the kids in eighth grade, seventh grade, sixth, they learn math fastest. The first problem they really learn that's complicated is how quickly they can no longer pass a class and the heck with it and they phone it in. they can no longer pass a class and the heck with it, and they phone it in. So they can do that math. And so if they always know it's never too late, that's a really strong cultural piece. We'll move ahead. So those are the main action steps here. And then our PLC roots is what we're going to be focusing on, particularly numbers two, three, and four. This year, phase two curriculum, how will we know when they learn it? We'll be working on our curriculum, common performance tasks. And then what do they do when they don't get it? And how do we extend for students? Three and four is how we really diversify and differentiate our learning in the classroom. And we can go on from there. Some current stuff going on there. You can go ahead to.
Dude, tell me which one you want her to get to.
Okay.
Because there's this one.
Yep. Let's go on to, that's just a kind of a restatement there. Let's go down to climate culture, right there. Climate culture. So let's skip ahead quite a few here.
Go to climate culture, Em.
Yep. Okay. So this is in the, in the climate and culture, we're going to go into year two of our staff training in restorative practices. Last year, we started the mentality, all behavior is communication, all behavior communicates a need. And there's really only five needs. What are students saying they need? And how do we help them pursue it appropriately? That's, that's the piece that we kind of instilled last year. We added some circles. So if you want to go on to the restorative circles, this year we'll be expanding our use of restorative circles, which includes more student voice, which we do in TA. We also do it in our disciplinary practices. Last year, a good example of this, our focus on, we had, we had a few, a real strong stretch of harassment where we were really concerned. And we used a lot of restorative circles to help intervene, especially when students were feeling like it was their friends that were doing the insensitive comments. We would, we would coach them up on how to have a conversation, how to come together. And a lot of that has a really strong peer accountability, which is when we see the fewest repeat incidents. So we used it then. But then we also talk with staff right now, if you have the fire and brimstone speech chopped up at the beginning because you're tired of this, you're tired of that, you kind of get one of those. Every little bit of old school and all of this, but get the kids talking. Have a circle about what you're seeing, get them involved. And that's another expansion that we'll see. So those are the primary climate and culture. And then if you want to skip ahead then to the, our MTSS has largely stayed the same. So we've got that in there for you to look at. Right here, back up one, back up two. I almost forgot this. Okay. With our restorative practices, every classroom, we're moving towards zero bystanders is our goal. Okay. So one of the things we've heard from our kids, that there's still some comments being made, there's still some issues where we got to work on with, with treating each other with respect. But what we are seeing is more students are reporting that they're seeing kids stand up for each other. We have put this up in how we can be better at coaching kids in ways that you can interrupt offensive behavior, question behavior, educate and echo. So it's four different ways kids can do it. A lot of times kids want to stand up for their classmates, they just don't know how. And so we're helping them with those. And we're telling them to do it in their own way, not the way that maybe their parent or their teacher would. Do it in your own language. All right. Last one here. We'll move ahead to the operations. So those are, and operations, not a lot different. This year, we're reviewing our organizational charts, just as a regular piece to make sure that our efficiencies are there. And then the safety and security, just the assurance of compliance with new legislation. So those will be some focuses. We'll also have to talk about just our teaming. We've changed teamings a little bit, so we'll have to operationalize that a little bit. So those are kind of the main focuses here. But wanted to, you know, kind of leave it at that. That's a lot. I hope I skipped enough.
We put a, you could have talked for probably three hours and you tried to condense it down to a shorter presentation. So we understand that that's hard to do.
And a lot of it is just very many ways of saying it. But I also wanted time for questions or anything that I spoke to that you'd like clarification on. One thing that really stood out to me was just like towards the end of that, how the kids can talk to each other and kind of intervene. I really liked that. Is that, is that posted in the classroom somewhere? It's in every single classroom. Yep. And we, we talk about it. I think the thing that gets the most attention at the national level even, is anti-bullying is get the bullies. Well, a lot of times kids don't even, they don't roll out of bed that day and say, I'm gonna get up and go bully someone. It's gonna be great. Okay. What they often do is they don't want, they show up at school and they don't want to be the nail. It's more fun to be the hammer. And so they just start picking at each other a little bit. And I know it's more complicated than how I'm letting on, but what often happens is their friends stand around or they stand around with classmates, they laugh a little bit, and, and then they all take that laughing as approval. And then what is the report we get? Everybody's against me. And it feels that way. And how would they know differently? Because that's what they're seeing. So we ask the question of kids, how would someone get the idea that everybody in the school thinks that this is okay when it's not true? And it's bystanders, so don't be one. Here's, and then it's always, what do you do with that? And kids want to do the right thing. They just sometimes need a way. And we've tried to provide different ways. And it's fun to see it. My favorite one, dude, that's messed up. I heard it last, last year, a kid like saying something that walked right by and before I could even stop, dude, that's messed up. I was like, all right. That was awesome. So.
Some of that has, that stood out to me when we were talking, you're talking about the MCA scores, the sixth grade math in C A. What do you think is going on there? And what are you, what's, what is your staff doing to try and fix that?
Yeah, I think multiple likelihoods there that we're looking at. We are, I think, seeing a broader range of skills in a classroom. We have kids who are ready to, they're, they're ready to get into more complicated problem solving. And some are struggling. And I think what is happening there is we're looking at now, out of group kids, so we get more direct instruction, whereas some kids are ready to practice. They're ready to demonstrate that. I, I think with it, we're examining gaps a little bit. And the gaps are hard to predict when we're breaking down some of the standards. So, you know, what I think is, is really, I think something I'm excited about is the Thursday, for example, tomorrow's our ELA, Thursday, we're coming together as an entire math department to talk about some of the things that we're finding that students a lot of times don't know what the question is asking. So today I'm in both sixth grade math classes, and the teachers are telling stories. And as they're telling a story, the kids are writing down and trying to figure out what the problem is. So they're identifying the problem, and then they're writing, you know, some small equations or some charts. And it's getting more beyond the obey, this is the math step, to the concept. And that's where I think it trips them up. We took an MCA together as a, my staff was really happy with me. I didn't take an MCA last year. And I think that was really something else where they were like, okay, this, the kids are used to this part. They're not used to over here. And so sometimes just getting through the whole problem solving piece and helping kids that conceptually, anywhere we enter that question and exit that question, that they can navigate that. Because if we disrupt one of the steps that they learn, I think that that gets really hard for them to, they, they shut down. The other thing that I think is real is stamina. I think stamina has been something that has been slow to return. We're working on that a little bit as well.
From COVID?
I think, well, I would, well, I would say probably COVID, yes, but also if you look at just everything that we as a society consume right now, it's built for the 32nd first. And I think we have to kind of embrace the world that kids live in a little bit, but we have to get them accustomed to building up the brains of muscle, you know, and they've got to exercise it. That's by far not a comprehensive answer to your question, but I think that's what part of Thursday's start is, is it's eight hours of invested training where we're really examining our data and looking at what our steps are with observable impact. And then staff will be identifying the number one, really the most prevalent barrier that we're seeing. And we're going to have multiple action steps within our math department and how to move through that. Did I answer your question, Eric, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Didn't, no, I left out any piece of that.
Well, thank you, Charlie. Any other questions?
I was gonna say, I really liked the chart and the graph. I mean, it's good to see the numbers and go to that, right? I mean, it's just, it's nice to see where they're, where they're at and where we can improve. So thank you.
And it's, it's discouraging, but we're, we're all so optimistic and looking forward to, to another, you know, really build on, on last year's optimism.
From a student's perspective, it's nice seeing other teachers how to take the MCAs.
I'll let them know you, you all.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
You ready for the new guy?
We're ready.
Brian Jensen, everybody. New high school principal.
Welcome.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Barton, thanks for the opportunity to be in front of you to talk a little bit about Princeton High School. Just on a personal note, as we're getting the slideshow loaded up, I just want to say how excited I am to be here, both personally and professionally. This is something that I've wanted to do for quite some time. And so to actually be here doing it is kind of unbelievable and super satisfying to me. So thank you for the opportunity.
So you'll have to tell Emily when you want her to go to the next slide.
Yeah, you can go right ahead. Like Charlie, I wanted to show you a little bit about where we are, where we were last spring. I do want to preface this with, the MCA results are not the be all and end all of what's going on at Princeton High School. It is one measure. It is a measure that I think is important, and it's a measure that I want us to do better in. But it is not the be all and end all. We are, in my opinion, gonna do the things that we need to do to bring about improvements in those scores. One of the things that Superintendent Barton and I talked about just today is, we should not be looking at trying to achieve above the state average, but being one of those schools that brings the state average up. Because we have a lot of advantages and not, we don't have some of the disadvantages that other schools have. So we really should be looking at how are we bringing that state average up, not are we above it? Next slide, please. So a little bit about our goals. The student learning team, one of the goals is to move to a guaranteed coherent and viable curriculum, part of the curriculum documentation and design phase one. We're gonna move into phase two. And we're going to increase our site results by 2% in reading a math like Mr. Vacher. I'm hoping that we go above and beyond that. We also want to deepen the use of the Princeton paradigm as our model of instruction and foster authentic literacy across content areas, reading, writing, thinking, and speaking. One of the things that we discussed at our PLC today was the fact that all areas have reading standards and really looking at monitoring, how are we teaching those in other content areas, not just focusing on the English department? In MTSS, what we are going to focus on is tier one. I'm a firm believer in the fact that before we worry too much about tier two and three interventions, we need to make sure that our tier one, the instruction that all students are receiving is really solid. So we want to make sure that we're using evidence-based practices with fidelity. And then also within our PLCs, making sure that we're using the problem solving process so that we can sharpen interventions done in the classroom for both academic and behavior. Our other big rocks of operations and climate and culture haven't set goals yet, but I will say that personally, the thing that I've talked to staff about, and then I've tried to talk to students about as well, is the importance of building relationships. I gave permission to the staff to spend the first three days of school, not worrying about establishing your syllabus or your classroom rules, but to really intentionally build relationships with students. Because without relationships with students, that other stuff's going to be extremely difficult. And so we're in the process of trying to gather some data on exactly what teachers did to do those things, so that we could share those across the staff. For some people that feel like I do a pretty good job of that naturally, others might say, eh, that's an area of growth for me. What did you do that I might be able to try so that I can make that a stronger area for me? Next slide, please. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on my training, previous to, to coming here as the high school principal. I spent a lot of time in the area of what Dr. Robert Marzano calls high reliability schools. And I'll just try to briefly explain what that is. Dr. Marzano and others studied businesses, those businesses that seem to consistently be at the top of their particular area, no matter what the year is, no matter what the conditions are. What is it about those businesses, excuse me, that allows them to stay at the top? And how might that translate to schools? And really, it comes down to, they don't let little problems become big problems. And so Dr. Marzano and his team identified a framework that would allow schools to be considered highly reliable. It's got five levels. Dr. Marzano would tell you, the first three levels are non-negotiable. If you're gonna try to be a highly reliable organization as a school, you need to demonstrate that you have these three levels. Levels four and five are, if you want to go there, that's a great place to go, but it's not necessarily where one has to go in order to be highly reliable. So it dovetails very nicely with many of the things that have gone on here previously. And so I really see my experiences meshing very well with what's, what we've been trying to do here in Princeton. So it's not a, oh geez, new leader, new direction, everything's different. It's going to be many of the things that we've already been trying to do, we're just going to continue to do. Next slide, please. This just shows the five levels of HRS. Level one is safe and collaborative culture. And I will tell you that that's the most important thing. Without that, again, you're not going to be able to get to level two, you're not gonna be able to get to level three. And that means students and parents feel like the building is a safe place physically and emotionally. Same with staff. And staff needs to work together. So a real big component of being safe and collaborative for the staff is to make sure that we're engaging in the PLC process, which is already in place. So we just want to continue to strengthen that, much like Mr. Vacher said, really focusing on those four questions that the de force put together. What do we want students to know? How are we gonna know when they know it? What do we do if they don't know it? What do we do if they do know it? So really just grounding our work in those questions. Level two is effective teaching in every classroom. That's the Princeton paradigm, having that framework for instruction that we all use, and then using evidence-based practices. And not only using them, but with intentionality. And when I say that, I'm talking about monitoring the effectiveness. So I might say, I'm gonna use this evidence-based practice because Dr. Marzano said this is a great way to do it. But if I don't monitor if it's having the effect that I expect it to have, then I'm not doing any good. So really, not just what am I doing as the teacher, but how are, how is it being received by the students? So really more So, really more focus on the students and what the students are learning versus how did I present it? Level 3 is just what we've been talking about with the curriculum documentation and design. That's ensuring that we have a guaranteed viable curriculum. Guaranteed means available to all students. Viable means that we have enough time to do what we say we're gonna do with all students. Every student has the opportunity to learn. And some students are gonna take longer than others, but we need to ensure that we have that necessary time. So, that typically results in narrowing the focus from the breadth of standards to a more narrow focus. Not that we're not gonna cover all standards, but we need to focus on what are the essentials? What are the needs to, need to knows versus nice to know? Not gonna worry about Levels 4 and 5. If you wanna learn more about standards, reference reporting, and competency-based education, you can Google those terms and find out information. Next slide, please. So, what I talked to staff about is, this is the work. We have standards that are established through the Minnesota State Standards. We have resources, our textbooks, books, articles, whatever we're using to teach those standards. We use highly effective instructional strategies. We monitor the results of the use of those strategies. And then we use the data that we collect to inform our instruction. Meaning, this is what I'm learning about, what the students know, how does that change what I do as a teacher? Like, when I say that's what teaching is, like, that's the work. The work is, here's the material, here's how we're gonna present the material, here's what the results say, here's the changes that we make. So, that should be our focus all the time. Whether we're planning instruction, meeting in our PLCs to talk about students and data and working with students. That's work, and that's what I want people to focus on. And that's where I think, that's where I believe scores will increase. If we do the right work, then more students will demonstrate proficiency in the standards. And then when it comes to taking a test like the MCA, which is supposed to measure how well do the students know the standards, they'll be able to replicate that on the test. So, if we concentrate on the work, the results will follow. Next slide, please. So, what's our focus? Well, I've had the opportunity to change jobs a couple of different times, to move into new organizations. And so, really, for me, it's a listening and learning. I did spend quite a bit of time here once, but it's also been quite a time since I was here. And so, I have to learn what's different about Princeton public schools than when I was here the first time. So, we've asked our teams to go back and look at their essential standards. We want to talk about, again, those four questions. How are students gonna demonstrate proficiency? We want to make sure that we have learning targets for students. I've talked to staff about the fact that the research is there. If students know what the target is, then they will hit the target. We have to make sure that we're telling students the why behind the what. A lot of the same things that the Positive Coaching Alliance was talking about works in the classroom as well. And then, there's a gentleman named John Hattie who did a lot of educational research. The number one most effective thing that we can do as teachers for student growth is to believe that we can make a difference. And so, we have to increase our teacher efficacy, our belief that what we're doing can make a positive impact on student learning. The way we do that is by giving our staff more confidence in those evidence-based practices so that when they go in front of those 30 kids, they know that what they're gonna do is gonna help students. The more we can do that, the more positive effect we're gonna have on the students. Next slide, please. This is really just kind of a belief statement. By putting these components in place, students are able to receive a guaranteed viable curriculum through effective teaching practices in an environment conducive to learning. So, you get systems of success, you add constant deployment, you add checks and balances, you get student master. Next slide, please. Not as many charts and graphs or pictures. I gotta work on the pictures, but the kids have only been in school for two weeks. What questions do you have?
Do you like it here so far?
Love it here. I would like to talk about that just for a second. Thanks for saying that. One thing that I've tried to tell people, whether it's staff or students, is that whole idea of tiger pride and pride in Princeton. I told students, I want you to be proud to be a graduate of Princeton High School. I want people to look at Princeton High School and say, there's a place that I'd like to spend my children to because that's a great place. Because that's what I believed when I was here previously. That's what I continue to believe. We may not have the MCA scores that demonstrate that yet, but we're gonna get there. But I really, like, yeah, I love it here. And I want everybody else to love it here.
Thank you.
It's great having you here.
I assume anybody keeps asking.
So, I'm just kind of wondering, how are teachers preparing us for like the ACTs? Because I feel like that's definitely a more like rigorous test than like the MCAs and stuff, and that determines a lot more for our future than like the MCA does.
Or like the STAR test.
The STAR test, kind of like, what's the point of the STAR test if you have the MCAs and the ACTs and stuff like that?
That's a lot of questions. I'll do my best to answer. What I will say about tests in general, what I hope your teachers are doing and what I'm gonna be working with teachers to make sure that they're doing is to provide the level of rigor necessary for someone to be successful in those areas. So, we need to really look, our curriculum director, Ms. Gunnerson, talks a lot about living in analysis. So, we're really gonna push teachers to push students to live in analysis and not just in retrieval of information. As a teacher, I too often allowed my students to live in a world of retrieval of information and did not push them into analysis enough. So, we need to equip them with the strategies that will push you into analysis more often so that you're prepared for the rigor in a test like the ACT. The STAR tests, we use, they're more for us than they are for you. We use them as a gauge so that we can measure what are we predicting for your success on a test like the MCA or the ACT, which has a little more high stakes to it? And so, really, it's just a gauge so that we can say, it looks like our students maybe aren't where we would like them to be in this area. So, what are we gonna do differently to improve on that before we get to that test date in the spring?
I would explain that to students because I know a lot of students just click a question after a question just to get through it. Because it takes up class time, it's kind of a pain.
It really is explaining the why. Why do we do the, you know? Whether it's the STAR test or this particular unit of study, like, why are we doing that? That's another thing that I've talked to staff. And it really kind of fits into the idea of learning targets and knowing where we're going. What I like to do when I go into classrooms is ask students, what are we doing and why are we doing it? Because there should be a purpose, and you should be able to explain that. Because I think if you don't know what you're doing or why you're doing it, then we missed a big step that we should have covered.
Yeah, I think like that's definitely a communication thing with students. Kind of help them like understand like why? Why are we doing this? Like, what is the purpose of this? What's the outcome going to be for us in the long term?
Especially for AP classes, that end of the year exam. If we're just compiling a bunch of information that has nothing to do with the test, why are we learning it?
Right, exactly.
I have maintained for quite a long time that relevancy, explaining to students how this impacts them currently or in the future, is one of our biggest problems, not in Princeton, but in education as a whole. I think we miss the boat a lot. I think too many students don't see the relevance of what we're doing to where they are currently or where they see themselves in the future. And that's something that we have to change. That doesn't happen overnight, but that is a constant. It's a constant message. Thanks for the question.
I think I like really clicked into the part about teachers believing that they can change. And I don't live in a COVID or whatever, but I do believe that teachers have come back and still are live in a different student and that they do feel that they possibly can't change the trajectory, that they see things going. And so, I'm extremely grateful for your leadership in that area because I believe that's the first thing that has to happen. They have to believe that they can change the behaviors and the culture that they've been dealt with. So, thank you for that piece of.
So, I'd just like to thank Mr. Jensen and Charlie. You know, strong leadership is huge. We have great principals here. Now, Charlie, you've been here, what, five years now, four years?
Fourth year this year.
And it's been great just to see him kind of come into his own and just that the middle school is just kind of continually improving under your leadership, and that's great. And Mr. Jensen, I mean, it's been a great start of the school year, and I've certainly heard lots of very positive feedback and excited for what's yet to be, right?
Yep.
And I think that echoes the board's feeling as well.
I did want to say one quick thing. I know we're along here, but Charlie, before you sat down, you said that some of the numbers and things and the slides were disheartening. But I wanted to say that I don't see that at all when I see your passion and the plans and the learning and the programs and the, I'm gonna mess up all the names, the tiger tune-up and the tiger recovery or, you know? When I see you talking about, when Aaron was here talking about that, I don't see the numbers as disheartening. I see them more as something that is actively and successfully, clearly, by the eighth grade numbers being changed. So, please don't see that as disheartening because, I mean, we all can see your passion, so we appreciate that.
It means a lot from the student perspective to have a leader. Both of you really to put, willing to put the amount of compassion that you have. Really hopeful.
I appreciate that. I think to speak to that too, like, and I mean, Brian was talking about the, not the be all and end all, but I think when we ask the staff, is this kind of what you see as well? Because the staff input is so important. And I think when we see the students light up, it's great. And when we see them hurting and discouraged, I think we get discouraged. And it's hard, we gotta, you know, we gotta make sure we're modeling that we're not defeated in that. But I think that when we see what it means for students and where they want to go, I think that's the added kind of angst, I think, a little bit that we feel when we see it. So, it's not, I appreciate it, but it's, I think that's what speaks to it. It's just the worry that, you never want a kid to ever close a door on themselves, I think is maybe what it comes down to.
Thank you.
September 27th, Reggie Dabbs is coming. He's a great speaker. He's coming to the middle school, 9:50. Ryan, what time is he speaking?
That's advisory day, so 1:40 and 2:35, something like that.
Coming up, you're all invited. It's gonna be awesome. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to the levy analysis. And information comes to mind.
Where is she?
You guys can go, man, sure.
Thank you. So, we move to the operations part of the meeting where every year we do a proposed levy at the maximum. And in December, we will do a final levy. So, the state of Minnesota, the MDE, has been running calculations all last week. It's good to see them send out notices or maybe not so good that say we're having technical difficulties. We expected to have the levy out by noon today. It will not be out until whatever they tell us. And it makes it, yeah, we all have those kind of issues. So, they are still working through these calculations. The final levy actually is, the reason that we approve the maximum is not from our standpoint per se, but it's from MDE's standpoint to make sure all the formulas are working correctly. So, with that, you will note that I've got three years here, and usually I do two. But I thought it would be good to see that from 22, 23 school year levy to the one that we are operating under for this school year, it was a 12.56% increase. From 24 now to the one that is proposed for 25, that percentage is 5.76%. Here's our changes. As you can see, the total general ed levy has gone down to 4.6. The local optional, that's just formula calculation that goes by students. And we had an increase in students in 24, or 23. So, that has an impact on what the calculations are. But the big change is the LTFM in school year 23, 24. So, for this current school year, we levy 676,000. The change has to do with the fact, not that we're going to get less LTFM, but there's more state aid because that facility adjustment bond has come off. And then we sold a bond, so that calculation is in there, which is affecting that number. But overall, we're getting more state aid in 21. The community education levy, the big change there is the school age care. For a couple of years, during, they gave us the total 100,000 that we levied. The change that you see, the 58,000, is an adjustment, but it's actually back to 21. Our school age care was going up and up and up. And we levied more that one year, and we actually only spent about 83,000. So, we levied about 125 and we spent 83. So, they're adjusting that down now, so it takes that long for it to work through the cycle. The general debt, as Jody from Ellers indicated at our last meeting, boy, that seems long. That we have the opportunity to refund our 2016 A bond. That was for our primary school. That bond, we can do a one-time additional payment kind of like to help us overall take down our interest expense over the life of that bond. And I believe she showed us an estimate of $1 million savings. We will be working on that bond. I sent in the paperwork required from us last week, and we will be approving and seeing. I believe that worked in the second meeting in October, the 17th. So, with that, that gives us, the drive is really our general debt service as far as the increase. That has to do with bond payments, or our house payment. But overall, even though it's going up, our taxpayers, as she showed you, But overall, even though it's going up, our taxpayers, as she showed you on the chart two weeks ago, should be relatively flat in the end. The goal is to reduce our payment, total payments on the elementary bond, and we will have probably one more opportunity for a refund with this process, because they do it about every eight years. So you do it about twice with a 20-year bond. Any questions? And getting later on, we will see the resolution that says maximum on it.
And then we'll also set the truth in taxation, public meeting, and then we would have to make the final rule.
All right, any other questions there? We're going to move on then to the action part of our meeting, 211A. And we had this for discussion last time, to accept the medical advisor agreement with Jeremy Peterson, and I will entertain a motion to accept that agreement. So, motion made by Chad, second by Deb. Is there any further discussion on that or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Levin B., the second reading of policy, I'll entertain a motion to accept the second reading of policies as presented.
So moved.
Motion made by Melissa, second.
I'll second.
Second by Deb, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Well, now move on to accept the levy resolution as presented. Melissa?
I'll second.
Motion by Melissa, a second by Chad, is there any more discussion? I think we will vote roll call, starting with Eric.
Yes.
Deb, or Don?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Motion carries. Levin B., accept the truth in taxation meeting for December 19th, 2023 at 6 o'clock, is there a motion to set that date?
So moved.
Motion made by Don, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Eric, me, Melissa, is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. There are no additions to the agenda, and the future meetings are listed there. I will now entertain a motion to close the meeting for negotiations for energy.
So moved.
Motion by Chad, a second by Don, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.